So like call order the work session of Wednesday, March twenty 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 four. Laura Sappertas reporter supervisor, if anyone will be joining me in the pleasure allegiance. Thank. Which brings us to our first public discussion. On the agenda more first and only. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be recognized? Very good. Seeing none, we'll move right along. Approval of the work session minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the March fifth and February twenty first twenty twenty four meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Moved in second and all in favor say aye.
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 Move the pose saying nay, nay. Eric. Public Works Director, Mr. Jones.
Good morning. Uh, update on some projects. Unfortunately, I don't have a update on streetlight upgrades. I know all the materials have been received, but I just don't know whether they've been installed. Or not, I haven't got communication from our contractor or consultant on that, so I'll. Follow up with them and see where we are.
They asked for the ones that have been installed and have now been operational for a while.
Right.
Let's go, I mean, outages, things on that line, everything and improvement from where we were before that, you know, obviously they should last forever in the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a couple of issues and I don't know whether it's with the. Um, this lighting management system or whether it's the fixtures. Or any of the components themselves, but there's. A half a dozen or so locations that seem to be persistent problems with. We get the notifications that there's an issue, there's an error, there's an outage or something, so we don't know. If it's like a communication issue with the nodes or whether there's actually physically a problem with them, so. We're working to resolve these issues as well as getting the different pillars. For making fixtures installed, but overall, yeah, it seems to be um. The systems are very reliable and you know, the lighting is just much better. Um, haven't really gotten any one or two little complaints concerns about. The brightness of them, but uh. Nothing significant, so so far, yeah. But then the communication and the, you know, the the lag in completing the project and um. And in my mind, it worked well and never.
Co- total number of lights remind me, do you remember? My own kind of lights, I would.
Uh, around two hundred.
Yeah, it's a fair number.
Yeah.
So to have a couple that are.
Two words.
Glitchy.
Yeah, I always said, I don't know if it's. If it's on the. The 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 software side of, you know, the the lighting management system side, or whether it's a physical issue with. A component that's installed or still trying to figure all those details out, but.
That's good.
Continuing to plug along that.
Appreciate all your follow ups on this. I know it's been a lengthy process.
It's been longer than.
Promise. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Your system.
Um, public works community center facilities, uh, we've gotten a preliminary. Site plan from CKS on the community center. Uh, people meetings, we're going to this meeting to. Discuss that and also uh. Talk about all the, I guess, the missing pieces that we need for the for the grant application. Uh, the Main Street sidewalk project, the meeting with small realty was canceled. They engaged an attorney to represent them, I guess, through the process and. Kind of work between Stephanie, Rick Mast and their attorney and Andy. To coordinate a meeting to try to push this project forward, so. I'm still working on the sign locations for all three properties there. Uh, garage rental on eight oh four Harlestown Pike, um, still working with the owner's attorney on. Ironing out some details on the draft lease agreement, so hopefully I have something this week. Um, and I know they had a garage sale this past weekend, apparently there's a lot of. Lot of tools that were that were achieved. So um, we're working to clean it out, so that's good.
Okay, so Harleyville Pike very the fault, right?
It's a Harlestown Pike address.
Okay, I think I might have saw the thought there, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, it is a Harlestown.
Okay, I haven't, no, I've read it that way, I've just stopped.
Well, then there's, there's the driveway off of Harlestown Pike, turn one off. Slashing. Like, yeah, it's that corner property. Grants, uh, was a significant amount of time and effort on the center grant application. Again, thanks to Stephanie for coordinating that effort, um, it's it's a lot of pieces to pull together in a short amount of time, so. Uh, we're we're working on that. Um, Wright Park Streambank Restoration Phase Two. The uh, Perkyon Waterhead Conservancy has been invited to submit an application for the, to the uh. Skookel River Restoration Fund for uh. Grant, this would be a twenty twenty five project. So we're hopeful that we're, we'll be successful in that or. They will be successful and then we will partner with them in in getting the project completed like we did the the first phase that. The project, it worked worked really well, so. We're working on with CKS on getting uh preliminary plans and finalized and uh. And also uh, working on permits as well. I think that's one of the requirements for them, they want at least initial. Permit applications in in hand or, you know, completed and submitted, so. As part of the. Funds. Process, we may want something that's more shovel ready, we're working towards that. Uh, contracts, we're finalizing the spec for the pavement markings and the basement pair contracts. Uh, hopefully those contracts will be awarded at the April third meeting. And also working on the road rest, road resurfacing list for twenty twenty four, and that will be. A uh, through the joint contract that we have coming in township or the. The Cape Seal and the uh, the Nova chip. Department activities, completing the sign replacements on all the Cape Zero roads. Significant amount of road which we did last year, so there were a lot, you know, really a ton of signs that had to be replaced, so that was a lengthy process. Um, transitioning from wear ops to construction activities now. Um, working on the Rolf Park improvements. Two trees have been removed, uh, the new parking areas have been created in stone, you're waiting for for paving. Uh, we're currently recreating the playground area. Um, to make it more usable and also to give us some additional area that we can uh. Add, you know, additional play equipment within the playground. Um, also adding some under drain for the uh, the play uh surfacing as well as. It it just fills up and then it just, it's wood, it rots if it's not green, so we're trying to improve that as well. Um, the fence will be installed next week. So we're we're moving forward on that project. Uh, Park Avenue fails aerating, top dressing and seating this week. Trying to dance between the rain. And then uh, gearing up for the drought stocking on March twenty eighth. Y T A daycare and the Southern Charter School will be involved in that as well again this year, it's that's fine, it is fine.
Question, road signage. At the intersection of Quarry and Main Street. When we have a traffic signal that has all the lit up street signs, do we still need to have the pole mounted? Standard street signs at the intersection?
No.
Okay, I just curious if there's, it was, if there's still a requirement for both.
Unless unless it was shown on the permitted traffic signal.
To have.
Those signs are supposed to by the print be there. I think that would play it, once the illuminated signs of asset go up, those are.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah, that's correct. One of the challenges is with these signal permit plans. We we have to watch when they get, you know, submitted for approval because. They, everything gets thrown in onto the signal plan and whether it's ours or not, whether it's related to the signal or not.
It's there.
Well, there's. On the Port Chop Island there, wow, there's two signs that are knocked down there.
That makes that now, they're always like that, they're down more than they're up.
I just noticed them yesterday or the day before, uh, and it's like. Um, crossing my fingers that they're not on the the signal permit. Because a lot of times it it extends that far out, but and whether it has anything to do with the signal or not. The surveyors will go out there to pick up this information and submit the permit plans. A lot of times include things that in my mind shouldn't be included and then they become ours to to maintain because they're on the signal frame where.
Stephanie, you're duly noting that comment, correct?
Oh, we've had this. We've had this conversation before, that crosswalks, pavement markings and, yeah. All that, so.
Thank you.
That's all that I have, I've been answering questions.
Any questions for Doug? All right, moving right along.
The only item I had, uh, personnel over another executive session.
Very good. Uh, building and zoning, Mr. Buke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So far this month, we have EA building permits, starting to ramp up into the spring season. Couple of new homes being constructed. Of the upcoming planning commission meeting, we're going to be looking at one nine six Main Street this week. And as discussed previously with. This board, um, we'll be looking at the one nine six Main Street official experience in April. At your April regular meeting as well.
If they get a recommendation for the place.
Correct. And also you should be, we're anticipating a presentation for the walk ladder up capability study. Also at your.
Hopefully it's a. It's not, no, can I, it's not a presentation, Mike, it's really just the resolution accepting. Um, that the study is completed, there's no presentation. Scheduled.
I think correct. So you, so you shouldn't see that, thank you, Stefan, thank you for that.
You live to a prediction and you want to see it. Happy to go to YouTube.
Where the website?
Correct.
So aside from all of that and the ongoing ordinance that we're working.
Any questions for Michael? All right, very good. Uh, Mr. Jakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting us manage the board to actually, um, have a follow up for the D C E D to get a. New project request, this is uh. Quest came through Senator Casey's office. And this is related to the Route one thirteen here each half. Half project. Stephanie is going to discuss this with.
Good morning, um, so at the last meeting, we talked about the shared use path, uh, progressing the project development. Um, along the alignment of the alternate one thirteen route. Um, I was tasked with setting up a meeting with D C E D, which I did with Michael Shore, he's the area representative, we've met with him now on a few different. Uh, projects and gotten good feedback, um, so in summary, I had that meeting last week. And he thinks that the progressing, the develop, project development for the path is a good project for Greenways Trails. Um, a few things to note, um, given the overall length, which is nearly a mile of path for both sections. He recommended focusing on the southern section, which is on the left hand side of the exhibit that's on the screen. Um, it's roughly twenty four hundred feet or so, um. For for this segment, and as we discussed, it would be, um, developed with the alignment of the road and, you know, being considered. Um, he liked this section because it tied into Schlosser Road, which has a small parking area and a small trail segment. As well as tying into Truman Court, the existing trail that was built as part of the Truman Court. Uh, land development on the right hand side of that section. Um, and one thing I wanted to note. Is in in looking at this, I think one recommendation would be to consider if you can go to Morris Road. Um, for some reason, my line work's not showing up on my screen, I don't know if you can see it. Um, there's a section along, there it is, um, Morris Road from. Um, the realigned road uh, up to Letterak Village Apartments, it's about five hundred feet, I think that would be a. A section that should be considered for this southern portion of the trail, and I think that should be probably added into the scope. Um, and then ultimately tie into the trail that is going to be, uh, built as part of the Letterak Village Apartments. Um, so that makes a, a nice southern section for the path. Um, the northern section, if you scroll to the right, uh, would be about the same length, um. And um, ending at Atlantis Road, uh, so that we are noting here would be a second phase, um. Just because of the size of the Greenways Trails grant, um, limit, which is, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand, so. Um, he he said to focus on the lower section at this point and prepare the application, you know, he recommended preparation of that application. He does, he did add that the legislators generally support shovel ready projects because they're more visible, but because of the size of this one and the nature of this one being a path. Um, he felt this would, um, have legs with the, with the reviewing committees, um. Moving it forward, so as part of that meeting, he also shared with the, with us the fiscal year appropriations. Um, application through Senator Casey's office, um, which is due a week from Friday, the twenty ninth. Um, and so he said, we should reach out and discuss this project as well, um, as part of. As part of that application, in the past, we've submitted for the whole kit and caboodle with the one thirteen alternate route. Um, but it's really just too big of a price tag for that program, um, so he suggested submitting, um, for construction. For the shared use path, which would. Essentially mean, you know, project development under other resources such as the Greenways Trails and whatnot. Um, so that package was attached, I think, with your, um, board packet, um, and it does require a fifteen minute, um. Meeting with the senators staffers, which we have scheduled for Monday, the twenty fifth at nine thirty, we were able to get that scheduled yesterday. Um, to go over the scope of the project, uh, but again, they they said. That we should continue, I guess, to pursue preparation of this application to get it in by the twenty ninth. Um, we'll use a lot of what we have for last year's with the whole project, but we will have to obviously edit the. The text to take out the roadway portion and focus more on the trail, um. Let's see, so that being said, um, the one other piece that I think would make the northern section probably, uh. More favorable in the future would be if you can scroll to the right, Mike. Um, there's an orange dotted section along Landis Road, that's the segment that is missing. It goes off the page to where it would tie into the development that has the trail. Uh, but then again, that's another eighteen hundred feet of trail to make that full loop, so again, I think that that's probably too much to add into. Um, say phase two for the shared use path, but it's, it's something that is. Um, on the the mapping application from the Trail and Sidewalk Committee as a future project, so. I put this together to show how all the pieces tie together, um, but again, you're often trying to build the scope. Towards the budget of what is allowed to be submitted and and recommended for award, so. At this point, I'm recommending going ahead with the Greenways Trails application for engineering or project development of the southern section, we can look at it once we develop the full scope, if we could possibly. At least include a preliminary layout of the northern section, um. That's due the end of May, so you will have a a resolution for that at the May meeting most likely. Um, and then also the appropriations package, which is due next Friday, so that one is more pressing. To get that in.
Stephanie, when you're looking at this in the future too, I I like you're saying, I like your phase three Landis Road segment. Maybe there's a phase four or in addition to, which would be to go west on Landis Road. To tie into the development that's only a few properties down, and we have the township open space and then it. Would tie a wraparound over towards your neighborhood, so that could, that would really link that, that a section of the township that doesn't have much linkage into our trail network in itself.
If if I could piggyback that comment, uh, one, my only comment that I really wanted to ask about. Discuss as well as with that Landis Road, uh, one of the needs that we've discussed for the Paterno. Traffic lane was pedestrian crossing, is there, could we make safe pedestrian crossing, excuse me. At Landis Road, I know, and yeah, as I said, I don't live too far from there, I think I've gone through the Paterno intersection three times already today. And uh, I mean, I I don't see the need for like, you know, I know we love the report, but I think if we could get a crosswalk there, whether we would get that grant or not. Have another option that we could take advantage of right here.
You mean to cross Lane this road as a signal, yeah.
And I mean, I know my family, we we cross all over one thirteen, but you know, I know it's it's. It can have its times, and I think that we discussed as a board, you know, that's important to get across there, that could be a good opportunity to have one on that side of the street.
I would also potentially add that. In this section to, I guess, the north of Landis Road, uh, of what you're looking at on the screen. I foresee if and when, you know, the one thirteen alternate route ever comes to fruition, there is a another section in between Landis and Paterno that I think warrants. Or could benefit from either a center left turn lane, because you have a left turn lane here, you have the left turn lane at Paterno. And there's a lot of driveways in between, and we've heard people commenting, obviously, with the four eighty eight site and the left turns into Cheswick. Potentially a center left turn through there would benefit a lot of single family residences. At which time I think could also include some type of pedestrian connections between Landis and Paterno at that point. So there is, there's, there's more beyond the limits of this plan, but I was using this plan as a discussion point for when I meet with the Senator's office. Right to to kind of bring them up to speed, because they're not up to speed, obviously, with. This whole section, uh, but to describe what we would be focusing on, uh, for this year's, the twenty twenty five appropriations package.
Uh, quick question, a clarification, that you're looking at doing this. Uh, in conjunction with the construction of the road or before?
This is solely for the trail, so. Um, the road is something that is not going to be submitted at this point or be discussed as part of these applications. This would be for the trail, uh, but it would take into account the road location in the future, so anything put in. As part of these programs, the trail would remain and be in its ultimate location.
Well, if they do build the road, excuse me, uh, if they do build the road, wouldn't they put the trail in next to it anyway? I mean, it would just be a waste of money or, uh.
Well, well, the trail would be. So what came out of a lot of our public coordination was the need to make these trail connections in this area of the township. So as one way of doing that without, because the road is. Expensive, there's a, there's a lot to it, um. One avenue was thought about to put the trail in first and make that connection, so people have that opportunity to move about through this area. The trail would then be there. At some point in the future, if if and when the road were to ever come in and the road would be built. With the trail there already. So it's building the trail first and keeping it in the future. Um, and then adding the road if and when that ever comes to fruition. Does that answer your?
Idea would be that, that we're not gonna, we're not gonna rip the trail out when we do build a road. It's gonna ruin.
Right.
But I'm just thinking about, uh, the two oh two extension they put in. Um, you know, that, they they put that through and they built a a trail next to it. Rather than us having to pull a lot of money out of our pocket, you know, have it on on the plan here that we're gonna do it, but. You know, it seems like they would put that in as they build the road, you know?
But the only thing is it might make the future application for the road more attractive also because. The cost of the trail would no longer be required, so that the overall value of the improvement might be something that we could get finally funding for.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it it's really, uh, so one of, you know, one of. Oh, the comments we definitely heard is, you know, the fact that. This area is thought to be open space, which it's not, it's it's township right of way for transportation purposes. And adding the trail will also, I think. What we heard was people want this connection, they can't really get this connection along existing one thirteen because of the proximity of the buildings and the like, you know. There's constraints there, so this would allow connections to be made for users. Besides vehicular traffic. It would also. Open up the fact that i- it is a right of way that the township owns that is for transportation purposes, and it will start to. Put people in that area that. Can be seen traveling along that section of trail, if that makes any sense, um.
Stephanie, what is.
Go ahead.
Your, your phase three trail going down Landis Road, if you're just trying to connect over to the Toll Brothers Development. The distance might be quicker just to look at extending phase three down one thirteen and utilize the sidewalk network in Cheswick rather than having to run something all the way down Landis Road. It's a significantly shorter distance to get to the same interconnectivity.
That is correct, yes, there, there are definitely options, um, around, around here, um. You know, that, the trail along Toll Brothers just ends at Landis Road there, um, it it does. Seem like it would be logical to bring them up to one thirteen there, but I agree, there's other ways around, and when we look at the mapping that we have from the county. If you recall, it, um, everything that's the same color is linked in some fashion, so if you look at that mapping, there's a lot of red. And red means you can get anywhere on anything that's red. Uh, it may be circuitous, it may take a while to do it, but you can do it. Um, so there's, there is a lot of red that's all throughout the township because those are all linked, but there's also other colors that are not, you know, that are isolated in this side of the township tends to have more of that. You know, isolated segments, so. Having, having something to look forward to try to make those connections is, is really what we were looking at here.
Okay, all right, so the question before us is. Pursuing a grant that would do, see, the engineering portion of this, right? Separate and apart, the construction. And that would the engineering be both for the north and the south side or just?
I haven't, I haven't, I have to write up that scope for the grant, I think we're gonna be focusing on the southern section primarily, we'll see where that takes us and how much. We can do for that, because remember, if the appropriations bill is. Or grant would be received, it is federal money. I think we all understand what federal money does to the. The engineering side of things, because there's other hoops to go through, um, so in that. In that regard, I would want to focus on the southern, and if there was something that could be done, like. You know, the updated survey and and things like preliminary layout for the northern possibly, but I don't think. Going through the Penn dot oversight process would allow all of that to be done.
All right, so.
If I may, another question, uh, this was what Dave said, um, do we have examples, and I know it's a question that I asked before too, was, you know, presuming they put down the road, we put a sidewalk there too. If they do that in the future, and just to cover everything. Do we have examples where it's, they're more likely to accept grants because they may have had a trail or are you familiar with any situation that you've seen a trail or you've seen sidewalk? You've seen maybe they move a little more aggressive in this situation.
And I guess. I, yeah, I don't really know if I have that specific example, um, I just want to reiterate, this would only have a ch, a trail, this won't have a sidewalk also, this is just.
No, the trail, and I think I was saying what Dave said, similar to like two oh two, where they put the trail there or a trail like thing. Um, and I'm not familiar with that project so much, you know, I would assume that they would have not put a trail, but a sidewalk, that's, you know, when that road is done. I'm just, you know, covering those angles too.
There's no sidewalk that will be proposed as a part of the one thirteen realignment. The pedestrian multi-modal portion of this is a trail system, so it's gonna be what, ten feet wide, twelve feet wide?
Be if, it has to be ten feet wide with the federal, federal dollars is, I know the township spec is eight, but the requirements now are ten across the board for shared use paths.
So that's what it's gonna be, there is no other option.
Yeah, I I think the question comes down, if I can translate maybe, the. Idea behind, if a new road goes in, there's usually pedestrian access that goes with it, whether the trail, sidewalk, whatever it is, new, new roads that get built have that. If we, depends, but if we jump the gun, so to speak, and we just do the pedestrian component of this, are we spending money that would have been otherwise spent? In the road construction, my.
Yes, that's my. Yes, that's my point.
Yeah.
That's my point.
My counter to that would be. Right now, this project's not moving off centering, okay, there's not, no one is funded this, we've been trying to get some confidence for twenty plus years and it's not going anywhere. But we do have a need based on the village, on the walkable. But we do have a need based on the village, on the walkable Letterock study for the pedestrian access through here. Yes, we're gonna spend some of our local dollars, but we're going after the exact same dollars that we would go after if it was gonna be a road construction project to fund the construction. So whether it's paid for under this grant program or that grant program, it would still be paid for by other people's money at this point for the path, or at some point in the future as a road and a path.
Right, I, I was just saying, I wa, I don't want to lay out a whole bunch of township money for this, if, you know, it's covered by grants, who cares?
But what's gonna happen is, we're gonna have to pay for the design of this, and what we're trying to do is get a grant to pay for the design, and we do our local match. Anyway, we look at it, we're gonna have a local match for any part of this that's gonna come through, except for maybe the eventual construction of the roadway. But we've already, you know, we'll have paid for the right-of-way and so I, I think it follows the same path we've always done, which is leverage our limited local dollars, which mo, with much larger grant dollars.
Right.
That accurate, Stephanie?
Yes, and it's just, it's just a slightly different phased approach
Yeah.
than what would have been considered in previous years, looking for the whole thing. And, and the, the biggest point is the whole thing is very expensive, so pu- putting the puzzle pieces together to get to the end result is what's needed, and this is what we heard is this is really kind of the first favorable step is to really focus on the path at this point. And I will add, the Greenways Trails does have a fifteen percent, uh, required local match to the grant request. And I will also add that I believe there is a CFA meeting scheduled for March twenty-sixth, uh, next Tuesday, um, where we're hearing that, you know, last year's applications for MTF, I don't know about LSA. Uh, if those would be on there, but, um, the, the idea is the MTF will be on there. I don't know if anybody has heard anything about this particular application, but I'm, I'm assuming not at this point. Um, and we'll see what they have to say. Um, at that meeting next week. I would say that if, if the township was fortunate enough to get something out of their MTF application, I suspect it will not be what the full request was. Um, so those, they always give you a chance to re-scope your project, uh, based on the, any award amount. So if that were to be successful and happen, we could certainly go back and re-scope it if need be to address the portion of the engineering of the trail, maybe for the whole length. But I'm just, I'm speculating at this point, um, be, depending on those results.
Thank you, and I think, uh, thank you for explaining that question again, the other way. Um, and I think the first question I had was just, you know, if we have other similarities where with a project like this would attract bigger and better grants, you know, for the future, that's, that's what I was asking. But if you aren't familiar, the idea is that this will.
Yeah, but I, I think the idea, Stephanie, would be if our su- success has always been from when we put, we get the right-of-way, we invest ahead of time on the engineering, and this is just following up on that is, now there's another step, which is another piece of that puzzle has, is gonna end up being built if it gets built. So it just makes each of these easier for someone to give money to in the future, there's pieces of it been done. I think that's was a specific example, but it's the same philosophy.
Oh, we have this.
No, no, of putting a trail ahead of the road to get the road built. But no, the specific examples of the other part are there in abundance.
Yes, I, and the only other thing I would like to add, if you can do any kind of pedestrian crossing on, on spot, one thirteen is, or kind of emphasis, or you know, maybe just some kind of clear walk that I think that.
For the north phase, you were talking about.
Where we hit it is one thirteen is Landis, and I mean, that, yes, whether whatever happens in the future with other projects we have, there's some pedestrian crossing right there. That's the only spot on one thirteen.
Yeah, the design of that will come in the future. Alright, so what we have before us is, if I understand it correctly, design, we're gonna submit an application for the Greenways Trails for at least
The max amount is two hundred and fifty thousand for that grant, so it's gonna be in that range.
For the southern section.
Correct.
And then to the extent we're able to include portions in the north section, we will. Then we're gonna use the construction dollars from Casey's appropriations grant to build whatever you can get designed. Do I understand that correctly?
That is correct, yes.
Is it, uh? Do we need a motion to make this all happen, or are we good?
I have a work authorization that I'm preparing for the Greenway, I, or that I can get over to Joe for the Greenways Trails applications, very similar to our previous applications, uh, preparation, and then the
Mr. Chairman, motion to authorize the township manager to approve the work authorization from McManan Associates for the Greenway Trails application, and to further direct the staff to work towards the, uh, with Bob Casey's office for the additional grant funding, uh, all which needs to be done in the next two to three months.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing, nay. Motion carries. Good job, Seth.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Very much.
Yes, thanks, Stephanie.
I, I will follow up after the Senator Casey's, uh, meeting next Monday, if anything changes, but that's the, I think. Um.
Perfect.
We'll have everything, look for some, uh, requests for supports.
You're gonna include some kind of typical section or cross-section or build this thing up a little bit?
We certainly can.
Okay, the next item on the management board is a new ethical welcome letter presented by, but thank you, uh.
Yep, um, as, as I discussed with some of you all individually, a little bit about discussions with the communication. Um, the communication committee has been looking over the last several months at an idea of a welcome pack. This came about from conversations that, uh, we've had with residential facilities and residents. We have a lot of new residents in this in our community, and you know, one aspect that people don't think is people are getting right off the turnpike, going home, getting right back on the turnpike, going to visit family, and not really seeing what we have. Some of the comments were, they didn't even know we have you know, in our community. So one idea that we came to was having a resident welcome letter. We know that we have a lot of communication that goes out to the residents, including not just ours, you know, we have the Indian Valley connects, all sorts of information that gives resources. Our idea was to get people connected to the community faster than any other meets. Uh, the way we could do this is one of our committee members, John, actually took, they actually went ahead and paid for, uh, to try, you know, try to get, uh, contacts of people, and what it was is something called lead space. It costs sixty dollars. It gives us a hundred to one, we, we figured there's a hundred to a hundred and fifty new residents per six months. What this does is it gives us all, all the new residents that have moved in. We go through the list. We can check which ones are actually hardly as well, you know, make sure everything is lower Southford residents, and the idea would be to mail each one of them the new resident welcome letter. You all have in front of you a rough draft. Uh, I shared it with the chairman, who actually made a nice copy. What it is is, for those who are watching, it's dear new resident and new neighbor, and we feel that having something that says dear new resident, you know, is a great way to draw people to our website to see all we have to offer. Um, the only difference on this, as you can see, we have a QR code. We decided that it looks more aesthetically pleasing to put the QR code on the bottom. So if you have it in front of you, the QR code would just be on the bottom there, so people could scan it. Uh, attached with this would also be a township quick reference guide and the township map. Um, and that will allow people to see what we have. Um, again, we, uh, looked through this, we figured that the cost is low. Uh, we know that there's a need for this, and we just think it's a great way to reach new residents and move closer to our community. Uh, we wanted to bring it up to this board of supervisors, and you know, if we have your blessing, kind of pursue this, and, uh, we can have get back to you with the final and for our first means to go. I would open up any kind of conversation, um, you know, we've, we put a lot of work into this and what we felt was important, keeping it as short as possible, so we don't have a bulky envelope with a lot of price, you know, with postage and whatnot too.
Uh, Kevin, I, I think what you have here is a good idea. Um, I think you need to, uh, personally, this is just my personal feelings. In your letter, maybe give a little history of the township first. Cause they, actually, when I read it, I thought it was funny, like, uh, you have community there and you have Gomine Shaft after, I'm like, what are you just calling me? Just, um, maybe just a, a, a little history of the, 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 um, township, and then add, you know, tell them what Gomine Shaft means kind of thing, and then lead into your, the rest of it. That was my thoughts on your letter. I think it's a good idea to send something like that out.
I agree, and I agree with Dave's comment, just, yeah, Gomine Shaft seems great, but it's sort of out of, you know, from that, so maybe a senator too. I also just suggested, I think in the order of the things and the bullet points, I would put the township website first and then push the other ones. That's the one that has the most resources for anybody to go to, and that's really where we want people to go first. So, but otherwise, I, I, I like it.
I helped author it, so I like it.
I was gonna complain about the way we're.
Alright, we will fix that up and, uh, report back to everybody.
Good work.
We have our great communication committee meeting tonight, so.
Thank you.
Beautiful, thank you. Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? Otherwise, we're gonna move to an executive session involving person.
One other item. Possibly.
And one, right. Any else? Someone wants to go into place, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. They ever say aye?
Aye.
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 Michael?
Have a good day.
Days to participate.